Welcome, everybody, to our Thursday, March 21st, 2024 City Commission meeting. We'll call this meeting to order, and if you would please join me in rising for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us begin this meeting by taking a brief moment of silence and reflection. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, our first proclamation tonight under Presentations is the National Library Week. Commissioner Tonga.
Thank you, Mayor. Phyllis, I'll bet you there's some folks gonna come down here. While they're on their way down here, I've always had this great little relationship with Phyllis because I always used to say, here comes Phyllis, I must owe a book or something. But second of all, my wife and I were never able to travel past the library or a zoo. My wife loves the library, and I'll tell you why. National Library Week 2024. Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions, no matter where they are on life's journey. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, and whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve, and whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals, and whereas libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth, and whereas libraries make choices that are good for the environment and make sense economically, creating thriving communities for a better tomorrow, and whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both fiscal and digital resources for present and future generations, and whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore I, John Tonga, by virtue of the authority invested in the mayor of the city of Dunedin, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim National Library Week, April 7 through 13, 2024. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. Ready, set, library.
Well, I know I was just here in February for Love Your Library Month, but this is just a week, so we're gonna focus on our library. And we've got a lot of great stuff happening. I have with me our president of the Friends of the Library, Mala Kalhoff, and they love celebrating our librarians, our library workers, our patrons, everyone that comes. And I have our Assistant Library Director, Carrie Colicchio, with me as well, who has taken on becoming the program manager of our Passport program, which is amazing, and it's a great service that we offer not only to our citizens, but to the entire Tampa Bay area. We are just seeing so many people come to our library for that program, and I'm so excited because our door count, we keep track of our door count, has just been skyrocketing this past month. So maybe a couple people trying to come to the library and then go to the baseball game, but I'm saying they're all coming to the library. So the week of April 7 through 13 is National Library Week. We're kicking it off. We didn't plan this, but there is a solar eclipse on April 8, and the library does have the glasses, so I know a lot of people are gonna be asking about that. They'll be available at the library on April 5, first come, first served basis until we run out. And then you can kind of stick around at the library if you check out the solar eclipse. Best time's about 1:55 to 3:00, I think, is what it is. And then April 8 in the evening, we are having a watch party with New York Times bestselling author online. She'll be online, and we'll all be together chatting with Cara Black, who's an amazing mystery writer. Her newest book just came out, March 5, and we're gonna have a Friends update. So I wanted Mala with the Friends to share a couple things about their amazing group.
Awesome. Welcome.
Thank you. As an advocate for the library and for the Friends of the library, if you are not a member of the library, I encourage you to do so. Please come join us. It's a free event on April 8. Cara Black, if you want a really good book to read, try Three Hours in Paris. I'll give you the hint. She's a sniper, and she's out to get, oh my God, Adolf Hitler.
Well, good for her.
Yeah, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And as I did want to also mention, a big thank you to our library staff. They're amazing, and they have a new video coming out, our last one, thanks to Brooke and Communications, went pretty viral, so we have a new one coming out. So thank you to our staff, to our friends, our foundation, and to all of you for supporting your library. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, yes. Okay. All right. Three, two. Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Now, our other presentation is for the 56th Annual Highland Games Proclamation. I will turn that over to our Liaison Commissioner Gow.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor and my privilege to call forward Ian Donaldson, Eric McNeil, and Sue and Dave Everett. Could y'all please come forward to accept this proclamation, please? 56th Annual, I don't know why this room isn't full, as it should be, but it's just wonderful, wonderful. Thank you all for what you do while you're standing there before I read this, just 'cause that's who I am.
You always have one antisocial.
As long as he plays.
That's right.
All right. Very excited. So let's get to all the whereasses. Highland Games and Festival Week. Whereas in 1899, Scottish families settled in what is now known as the city of Dunedin. And whereas pleasant reminders of our Scottish heritage continue throughout the naming of our schools, shopping centers, streets, and buildings. And whereas in 1967, the Highland Games were implemented to raise funds to support the three Scottish bands of Dunedin, the City of Dunedin Pipe Band, the Dunedin High School Scottish Highlander Band, and the Dunedin Middle School Band. And whereas our continuing interest in Scottish heritage and customs is further reflected in our authenticity-clad bands, professionally-trained bagpipers, and Highland dancers and athletes, and in this year's 56th Annual Highland Games and Festival, we continue to pay tribute to our Scottish origin. And whereas we also pay tribute to this year's honorary chieftains for 2024, Dave and Susan Everett, in recognition of their many years of service and dedication to the Scottish Arts Program in our community. Now therefore I, Jeff Gow, by the virtue of the authority vested in me by the mayor of the city of Dunedin, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby recognize the 56th Annual Highland Games and Festival Week commencing on Friday, April 5, with Pipe Band march through downtown Dunedin along Main Street and ending at John R. Lawrence Pioneer Park for a festival and gathering. The Highland Games will then take place on Saturday, April 6, at Highlander Park. We encourage all citizens to participate in the many activities planned for this very special tradition and occasion. And April 6 is also Tartan Day.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. I'm going to present this to our honorary chieftains this year, David and Susan Everett. We're really excited. Planning is going really well for the event. Our entries are closing for some of the events, but we have, I believe, 75 athletes, which is about as most as we can fit. That's up from last year by quite a few. Our Klan Village is full. We have no more room unless we find a bigger park somewhere. And we have a record number of pipers and drummers who have signed up to compete here for our solo contests, traveling in from all over. There are competitors coming from Oklahoma and Texas, New York, Virginia, New Jersey. It's pretty awesome. So we're quite excited. So thank you very much.
And I hear I'm getting kidnapped by somebody.
No. Oh, no. But I hope you don't miss the games.
I told them they could kidnap me as long as there was Scotch involved.
We'll make it so. I hope I'm kidnapped one day. Although you don't need to kidnap me to give me Scotch.
I grew up in the right town to be able to say that. Come on now.
We'll make sure that works out.
Thank you, guys. We can't wait. Thank you for all you do.
Before you guys go, I just want to recognize Dave and Sue for their insane number of years and dedication and hours and passion that you have put in to not just the Scottish Arts Foundation and the Highland Games, but all of our school programs. Jamie graduated, I won't say how many years ago, see, and you are still involved, and that just really shows the passion of our heritage and culture and what it means. So thank you very much. This is a well-deserved recognition. Thank you.
Come on, guys. Well, let me ask for citizen input. You can go if you want to do that. Yeah. Now is the time for anyone wishing to come forward under citizen input to speak to any item that's not already on the agenda. I know of one lovely lady in a green frock right there. Come on down.
I have to follow tonight with all these people. They did a great job. Well, good evening to everybody. It's nice to be standing up here tonight on behalf of the businesses that are located at the West End of Main Street in Dunedin. I'm speaking as a proponent for the continuation of the Freebie Looper Service that has now been a pilot program and is coming to an end. We hope it's not an end because absolutely we feel it has been a great asset to the community. The surveys have gone out, and the comments that we've heard have all been very favorable, as well as the statistics that have been sent in from the time that it started until now. A great fit for Dunedin. With visitors and locals alike being able to speak about this and have them come into Dunedin and be able to park on the outlying areas and have this wonderful service bring them into the community has been outstanding, and it can't be said enough. All accomplished in a very professional and pleasant atmosphere with the drivers. These vehicles are compact, which makes them being able to maneuver around the streets of Dunedin, and this is very, very important. Most of all, from an economic standpoint, the Freebie has created a very positive impact for the businesses in the sense of increasing awareness, for the business themselves redolting, and of course, many extra dollars coming in because of this. And we're not all for the money, but let's face it, it does certainly help. And these people really are so accommodating to the passengers. We hear nothing but great comments when they get off of the Freebie and say, this is the best that they've ever seen down here. And some of them have never even been down to the West End. So they get off at C.C. Ryder's, or they go off at Victoria Place, or any of the outlying stores, and then, of course, to Walt's Place and down to us. And they just go around, and then when it's time to go, there's a Freebie ready to take them back. So I guess at this particular point, I can't say enough about it, and I know that my other cohorts are very much in favor of this tonight and hoping that everybody listening will take the same viewpoint and look forward to a positive outcome. So thank you so very much for all your time.
Thank you, Ellen. Great job.
Can you give me your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Well, it's Nancy Ellen Hale, H-A-L-E, and I live at 509 Ashley Drive, right here in Dunedin.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ellen. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak to any item that's not already on the agenda? Okay. Thank you. All right, we're coming to action items, and there is a Resolution 2406. I have a voting conflict, so I will be removing myself from the dais, and I have turned in my conflict notice to my city attorney, and she'll come get me when it's done, and I'm gonna turn it over to the Senior Commissioner on the dais, Commissioner Gow.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, good luck on getting the gavel back when you come.
Did you reach it?
Oh, no. I doubt I'll need it. That's right. That's right. Yeah, no kidding. No kidding. Thank you, Mayor. It's Item 2A, and as the mayor had mentioned, it is Resolution 2406, Non-Advalorem Revenue Note, Series 2024. Jennifer, could you read that resolution by title only?
Yes. Resolution Number 24-06. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dunedin, Florida, authorizing the issuance of a not-to-exceed $2,600,000 City of Dunedin Non-Advalorem Revenue Note, Series 2024, to finance and/or reimburse the cost of various capital projects, including without limitation, the acquisition, design, construction, reconstruction, and equipping of a golf course renovation and improvements related thereto, and to pay associated transactional costs, providing that such note shall be a limited obligation of the city payable solely from non-advalorem revenue budgeted, appropriated, and deposited as provided herein, providing for the right securities and remedies for the owner of such note, making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith, and providing an effective date. That was Resolution 2406, read by title only.
Thank you, Jennifer, very much. I'm looking for a motion. So moved.
Second.
All right. And is there any comment on how that motion is made?
Yes. So with this, normally you do a motion just to approve the resolution, but in light of the voting conflict and the mayor removing herself from this, we also need that motion to include an authorization to authorize Commissioner Gow to execute the associated borrowing documents.
So moved. Second. And you'll figure out how to write that in on the back end? We need help with that. Fantastic. All right. Les, can you give us a presentation, please?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Les Tyler, the Finance Director. This item is mentioned, there's Resolution 2406, Non-Advalorem Revenue Notes, Series 2024, for the Golf Club Restoration Project. Key members of our finance team are here today with us, and we have Joel Tindall with Hilltop Securities with us this evening, our financial advisor. We also have Dwayne Draper with Bryant Miller-Oliver. He's our Tax Disclosure Counsel, and Dwayne's to the right here. And also our city attorney, Jennifer Cohen, is also a key member of our finance team. I'd like to briefly go over some background for this item, starting on December 12, 2023, the City Commission approved the contract award for bid 23-1243 for the Dunedin Golf Club Restoration Project to XGD Systems, DBA TDI Golf. The total contract award and construction amount for that contract was $5,839,000. The project finance plan discussed at the December 12 meeting included a $2.5 million contribution from our Golf Operations Enterprise Fund to fully fund the golf restoration project. The finance plan we're discussing today is a $2.5 million loan for the golf restoration project. It'll be a tax-exempt loan, a bank loan secured by our city's covenant to budget and appropriation non-advalorem revenues for repayment. The loan amount and debt service is included in our fiscal year 2024 Golf Operations Fund. The city issued an RFP, RFP Number 21-1255, and that was a request for bank loan proposals on January 26, 2024, in an amount not to exceed $2.6 million, to be repaid in approximately 10 years for the purpose of obtaining a tax-exempt loan for this project. The intent of the RFP was to select bank financing that provides the lowest overall borrowing cost to the city and meets the financing requirements of the city. The proceeds of the loan will be used to finance, as mentioned earlier, for the cost of various capital projects, including acquisition, design, construction, reconstruction, and equipping of the golf course renovation and improvements project, and also to pay for the cost of expenses in connection with the issuance of the Series 2024 note. The city received five proposals with our RFP that were deemed responsive by our February 25 submittal deadline. An evaluation committee was formed to discuss the proposals. The evaluation committee ranked South State Bank proposal the highest. Staff has performed due diligence, working with our city attorney and bond counsel and our financial advisor to verify that the terms and conditions of the loan proposal are acceptable to the city. The evaluation committee included myself, Les Tyler, the Finance Director, Vince Giszi, Director of Parks and Recreation, and Gene Horwater, our Budget Financial Analyst in the Finance Department. South State Bank's proposal provides a fixed interest rate of 4.19%. The loan will have a final maturity date of April 1, 2034, or approximately a 10-year loan. And one important thing is the loan provides flexibility to prepay at any time without penalty over that 10-year timeframe. Some key financing information that's mentioned in the background section in the staff report is the total debt service for the loan over the 10-year period is $3,186,000. The average annual debt service is $318,300 per year. And I also want to mention that in our debt policy, we have a requirement that we talked about before during the budget process, that in our policy, we have a limit that we will not have more than a ratio of more than 20% for our total annual debt service divided by our total governmental revenues, and that with this loan amount added, included in, our ratio would be 14.4%, well below our 20% maximum in our policy. And regarding the resolution, Resolution 2406 is attached in the staff report. I'd like to turn it over to Dwayne Draper with Bryant Miller-Oliver to briefly go over some key points in the resolution.
Thank you, Dwayne Draper at Bryant Miller-Oliver. We've had the privilege to serve as your bond counsel for over two decades, and I'm happy to be here tonight. Les covered really everything I wanted to cover with two exceptions that I'll mention. The interest payments on the loan will be semi-annual. The principal payments will be annual. And the bank agreed to the city's anti-dilution test of 1.5x, and that is the same anti-dilution test the city has with regard to other debt. That just limits your ability to borrow, a legal bonding capacity, so to speak, so they agreed to what you've already agreed to on your other bank loans. And with that, I'll just open it up to any questions that you may have. That concludes my presentation. Thanks.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Tonga.
Thank you, Commissioner Gow. I had a thorough review of this by the city manager, and we discussed this in detail, and I'm fully aware of the principles involved in here, as well as am very supportive of the action as it relates to the asset that we're helping to create here and promote. Thank you.
Commissioner Walker.
No questions. Just, yeah, I've had a very thorough briefing on this. This is important for the project, and that's all I've got.
Very good. And I agree with my colleagues. Yeah, we've been briefed on it. We know how it's gonna work. We're all very excited about the golf course and opening up hopefully in late fall. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the citizen input. If there's anybody who would like to have a question on this, please come forward. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, seeing none. I will bring it back to the commission and ask for a roll call vote. It gets to be Commissioner Tonga.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, and that passes unanimously. Well done, gentlemen. Look at us. All right, an all-male commission.
Oh.
It has been a long time. Long time.
On that, I have a better joke in the air. It's actually a pretty big deal.
I got male cooties on the gavel.
That's all right. All right. Thank you all for that. Little musical chairs. Our next item is to award the engineering and design services for the ARPA Broadband Internet Fiber Project Phase 2, 3, and 4 to McKinn and Creed, Inc. of Clearwater, Florida, in the amount of $393,281. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, if you're listening, Commissioners, good evening. Michael Nagy, Director of IT Services, here to request approval on awarding a contract to McKinn and Creed, Incorporated, for the engineering and design services for phases 2, 3, and 4 of the ARPA broadband project. So as a reminder to the City Commission and our public audience, the ARPA broadband internet funding will provide a much-needed and new secure underground fiber optics cabling infrastructure to the city. The fiber cabling, I'm sorry, let me go back. I skipped ahead too quick. For those in our audience that are unfamiliar with the term as to what is broadband internet, in simplest terms, it is any high-speed internet service. Broadband is the most common kind of internet service available, and that's been true in most parts of the most populated regions in the United States for several decades. There are four types of broadband internet service that you can use. Cable internet uses the same coax cable that you get your cable TV into your home. DSL, known as digital subscriber line, it uses your telephone line for internet connections. Fiber optics cabling, which is the fastest residential internet you could buy. And lastly, satellite internet service, which is the least-used and most-expensive type of internet service, typically used in very rural regions of the country, third-world countries, and in certain military installations where they want security. The purpose of the ARPA Broadband Internet Funding is to provide public wireless internet in designated underserved areas in the city, such as in city parks, parking garages, the marina, and also in the downtown area. Sorry about that. It's not going fast enough. So as I mentioned, as a reminder, the City Commission and our public audience, the ARPA Broadband Internet Funding will provide much-needed new, secure underground fiber optics cabling infrastructure for the city. That fiber cabling would provide dedicated connectivity between many of our city buildings, such as a dedicated data line between the Public Services Data Center and the City Hall Data Center, a new data line connection between City Hall and the Harbor Master Building, a new data line between City Hall and the Monroe Street Garage in downtown areas. By connecting those buildings, the city will be able to provide free public Wi-Fi zones in these areas: Edgewater Park, the Marina, Pioneer Park, Veterans Park, Main Street walking areas, the Monroe Street Garage and surrounding area, and a future garage on, parking garage on Scotland Street. In the past, the city approved funding for the ARPA Broadband Internet Project Phase One to install fiber optics cabling from the City Hall to the wastewater plant back on June 8, 2023. That project did not require any design or engineering work, as it only required new fiber optics cabling lines to be installed in our existing underground conduit. Currently, we are asking the City Commission to approve the engineering design work for Phases Two, Three, and Four of the ARPA Broadband Internet Project. The design work will then be used for contractors to bid on the work required to complete those phases. The cost of the engineering design work is $393,281. The funding is available in the IT Services Fund for ARPA Broadband Internet Project 152102. The current available funding for the entire ARPA Broadband Internet Project is currently at $2.6 million. Also, as a reminder to the City Commission and our public audience, the ARPA Broadband Internet Project Phase Two will connect City Hall and Public Services with that dedicated fiber optics cabling, which will provide a direct connection between the city's three data centers for data storage and backups. Those data centers are located in these buildings: the City Hall Downtown, Public Services Administration Building on Conde Road 1, and the City's Emergency Operations Center on Belcher Road. As a side note, the city already has a dedicated indirect fiber line between the EOC and the Public Services Building. That was installed a couple of years ago. The new fiber cable we want to install under Phase Two of the ARPA Broadband Internet Project will therefore connect City Hall to Public Services to the EOC without having to be routed through any other city facility. The ARPA Broadband Internet Project Phase Three will connect City Hall to the entire Marina and Edgewater Park area. By doing so, it will provide free public Wi-Fi in the park and surrounding Marina area. It will also connect the Harbor Master Building directly to the City Hall Building without relying, relying on the current third-party internet provider we use. Phase Three fiber cabling will also allow for a future connection to the parking garage on Scotland Street, where free Wi-Fi and security cameras can be installed. Now, Phase Four of the ARPA Broadband Internet Project will connect City Hall to the downtown corridor in the main, in the Monroe, Monroe Street Parking Garage. Phase Four will provide the free public Wi-Fi in Pioneer Park, Veterans Park, the Monroe Street Parking Garage, and in designated areas along Main Street. By doing so, the security cameras in the parking garage will be on a direct connection to the City Hall without relying on the third-party internet provider we have now. During the May 16, 2023 commission meeting under Agenda Item 2.D., the commission awarded contracts to 22 pre-qualified consultants as a result of RFQ number 23-1221 to provide miscellaneous engineering, landscape architecture survey, surveying, and planning services to the city. One of those awarded consultant contracts was to McKinn and Creed Incorporated. The scope of fees in the amount of $393,281 being asked for for the engineering design work services for the ARPA Broadband Projects Two, Three, and Four was produced by the very same engineering consultant firm of McKinn and Creed Incorporated. The city's engineering department recommended to the IC, IT Services Department that the engineering design work services for those phases should be completed by McKinn and Creed, as they would be the logical engineering firm to provide services for this type of project due to their previous success in the design and management through construction on the recent Solon Avenue Fiber Optics Project, which provided fiber cabling between Public Services and the EOC, and also into the new park's operation facility. Due to the deadlines for spending the ARPA funding and implementing the fiber cabling required for the free public internet, the city will need the engineering design work project to be completed as soon as possible. McKinn and Creed has stated that they will expedite, expedite their work once the costs have been approved by commission, which will help us meet any timeline for bidding out the RFQ for the actual construction work. Staff therefore recommends the approval of a general engineering consultant service authorization for Phases Two, Three, and Four engineering design services to McKinn and Creed Incorporated. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Torga, any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Would you, you just went over a lot of this, and let me just, let me just ask this question really simple. This is for principally for a, a system that is, that is good for safety and security for, for the city. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that really is the main, main purpose of this?
No, the main purpose is to provide free public internet. In order to provide it, we have to connect our buildings and provide those, that infrastructure. You can't put water in a park, a water fountain, without putting in the water lines. You can't provide internet without putting in the conduit and infrastructure.
So it really isn't for the safety and security of the building?
It's a benefit of it. It's a side benefit of, yes.
That's what I thought. I mean, the main-
That wasn't our main purpose. The main purpose-
When we started this, it was for, for the free, free-
Yes.
Free Wi-Fi. And so I was wondering previously, was there a less expensive way of doing this for free Wi-Fi? And we've had free Wi-Fi here before in, in certain of these areas. So I assume that this combination then, and this is my question, I assume then that the value is in the combination of, of the security and safety for the city as well as for the free Wi-Fi. Is that, is-
Exactly.
Want to comment about that, or?
If, if we don't get it approved through this project with this free government money, IT Services will have to come back to commission at a later date and request all of these infrastructure changes at a cost out of the general fund.
For each one of these facilities?
For each one of these phases and the future phases that aren't included in this project.
And is that for security?
For security, mainly for security.
So I, I, that's a, I think one of the main points here, isn't it? I mean, we talk about, we talk about that constantly of, of our concern, of our, of our security of our systems here. So I just wanted to just reiterate that. I may not have been quite so aggressive if it were just for free Wi-Fi. The second question as it relates to this, the options for free Wi-Fi are, is it, is it that you have your own program on your, on your phone? Or, or what, what, what happens if you don't have this free Wi-Fi in a, in a particular area?
Most people probably have some sort of data plan on their own personal device, but this will give them the option when they're in an area where we have, providing the free public Wi-Fi in our parks, parking garages, they could connect automatically to it without using their data plan. So it's just an option for them. It's, we, we currently don't have Wi-Fi in our parks. So if you are a visitor or citizen that doesn't have a, your own data plan, or for whatever reason, it's not working, we'd be able to tap into our free Wi-Fi and use it.
And lastly, if you would, the, the cost of this, the design is about 400?
Yes.
And, and the implementation is estimated at?
Out of the 2.6 million, so we're talking about, about 2.2 million. We won't truly know until we put it out, once we get the design work and put it out for bid.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Gow?
No real comments. I, I think it's necessary.
Questions?
Yeah. So as long as we have ARPA money, let's, let's use it. But I don't have any questions. It's good.
Any questions, Commissioner Walker?
Yeah, so the infrastructure that's getting replaced, just as an example, the Harbor Master Building, I'm assuming that it's, it's, it's different hardware, firmware, all that stuff than what we're currently got here. So basically, there's an added benefit, my understanding, you can confirm this, added benefit of basically making the infrastructure similar across the board.
Yes. Example, we are using a third-party internet provider at the Marina. Their phones, the security cameras, their data, the internet access is all relied on that carrier connecting back to our network. If that carrier has some sort of integrity or intrusion problem, it could affect us. By us putting our own dedicated fiber to that building, they're on our network, on our voice system, on our internet. The security cameras are accessible from this building or from the EOC when we're in the EOC mode. Right now, we don't have access to look at those cameras. Fire and rescue don't have access without going to that building. So there's that part of that security aspect. And that, that hap, that occurs in the Monroe Street Garage and any future garage.
That's a huge benefit. I mean, that's actually, that's a security issue all by itself.
In addition, and going back to what Commissioner Torga mentioned about security, was Phase One has given us a dedicated line between this building and public services. Currently, we go from Public Services Building to the wait, to the water plant, down San Christopher to the wastewater plant to here. On San Christopher, fiber was installed 20-some years ago, and some of it's just under the blacktop. When they dig the blacktop, there's our city main fiber. It's, if water plant has a problem or wastewater plant has a problem, the entire city could be affected. This would provide secure access between all of our data centers. So if we are in an operation mode, emergency operation mode, we don't have to rely on all these other buildings being up, as long as the, the three main hurricane-rated buildings are up.
And the, the cost of this design study, you know, also, it's my understanding, and you can confirm this, is that it's being paid by ARPA, which was, my understanding again, was one of the original intentions of the American Recovery Act money, was to, this was actually used as an example to provide free public Wi-Fi.
Correct.
So you're fulfilling that with the funds which they were intended for.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
I, I think I'm going to look to you, Jennifer, on this one, my question. Can we, we talked this morning about the whole parking sensor thing?
Yes.
So as you're looking at that, and you're looking at this, can you take the parking sensors into consideration with your design phasing?
Yes, absolutely.
Not your design phasing, I guess your implementation.
Yes. It's certainly part of this.
But I guess it would be designed because those parking sensors require Wi-Fi, and they're not on the perfect grid.
Can I jump in here?
Say what?
Yeah. The parking sensor program is a totally separate system where the vendor, the contractor provides cellular service. They maintain it all. It never hits the city's internet at all.
Okay.
It wouldn't need to at all, unless we want a separate system that we would maintain-
All right. So you must be looking at something different than what, what we were originally talking about, because I know what we were originally talking about required Wi-Fi.
Originally for that, yes. And then we talked to the city of St. Pete Beach, and their company they're utilizing, and they went with the less expensive option that they currently have, so it doesn't rely on this.
I just want to make sure, whatever it is, I don't care. I don't care how it operates.
Yes.
I just want to make sure all the various pieces are thought through if, if we go down that road, that we're not designing something that then puts it off.
Right. Yes.
That's all.
Got it.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to come forward and speak to this item? Seeing or hearing none, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Gow, thank you. Any final comments, Commissioner Walker?
Yeah, I just, you know, I've spent some time in Europe. There's so many towns that have this, and I know that there's a lot of towns, you know, cities here in the United States that, that say they're going to do this, and I've lived in a couple of them. And it's just taken them forever to get to, to this place, and we're, we're making it happen. So, and we're using it with money that was basically passed to do this. So I'm a big fan. Thanks.
Commissioner Gow?
Big fan.
Commissioner Torga?
Well, I, I too agree. One of the big discussions when ARPA was put out there was there are a lot of people that are underserved people in the community that don't have access. And so there are parks here and, and other opportunities for people to be able to bring a device and have access to free Wi-Fi where they may not be able to afford to have it at their home. So that's all good. I also think that, I believe that Wi-Fi capabilities, especially like in the downtown, would, I believe it can provide us with a landing page that we can communicate with the people that are in Dunedin, and gives us the ability to track certain things, which will help with tourism, usage, messaging to our residents, messaging to our visitors. So there are a lot of advantages to having this Wi-Fi, especially in this particular area, when you've got, you know, maybe 50% of the people down there don't even live here, and you need a message to them about something. So I really love that idea. So I'm very supportive of it. Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Commissioner Gow?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Mayor Buzowski?
Aye, and that motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Then we have the proposed agenda for April 4. We have a development project on there.
We do.
That's pretty exciting.
Design review, yes. It's actually the first one that's met the threshold for design review in two years.
Yeah. Very exciting. Okay. Any changes from anybody? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Commissioner Gow, Commissioner Walker, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Any informational items for the good of the order?
Yes, I have one. I just want to remind everybody that March 29 is National Vietnam War Veterans Day. So should you know someone in your community, or have a friend, or if you are one, that's a day set aside for the folks that were involved in the Vietnam War.
Thank you, Commissioner. That would include you.
Yes. Thank you.
John?
And you too? No. Okay. My dad.
Is it VFW doing anything?
I don't know the programs for either one of them, but they will, there'll be something going on.
We had the wonderful ceremony in Pioneer Park.
Yeah.
One year.
I think it'll mostly be at the facility.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for asking.
I'm just going to bring something up that just came up today, and I emailed all of you, and that is the best, the Visit St. Pete Clearwater Best of the Bay Awards. We have 20-some Dunedin businesses or facilities that have been nominated. The voting is closed. But they do include Downtown Dunedin as the best stroll, which I think we have a good chance of winning that. I don't remember who we were up against, but it looked like we had a pretty good shot. It also included spring training as being the best baseball event in the area. I think we have a good shot. Our Fine Arts Center and the Highland Games Festival, Best Festival, Caladee Sea Island, Honeymoon Island, and Honeymoon Island Dog Beach, and then any number of, and the Chamber Visitor Center. So, but in any number of businesses, I just feel like, especially because it's Visit St. Pete Clearwater, they have really invested a lot in our community with the stadium, with the now 75,000 they're giving to the Highland Games. They're investing in the visitor center. I feel like we should show up in, in a big way to support our local businesses, even if just one thing wins. To me, this organization is investing a lot of money in, into our community, and I think we should show up and show just what a little, small town can do, that Dunedin is worth being reckoned with. It just happens to fall on the night of a Thursday night commission meeting, May 16. So, and we know how Commissioner Franny, or Vice Mayor Franny feels about that, but I'd just like to, we don't have to decide now. I would like Jennifer to-
Looking for a text from Mo.
Yeah. I'd just like for, for Jennifer to see if there's, if it's even possible that we, because I, I do think we should all be there. With 20-some businesses being nominated, I feel like there's a good shot we'll have a couple that win, and I just think we should go and show the love. I don't even know where it's going to be yet. They've just announced the date and the time, and it's 5:30 on May 16. They've just announced the date and the time, and it's 5:30 on May 16th, right in between a CRA meeting and a regular meeting. So that's it. You know, we may not be able to do it, I get it.
Important promotion.
No. No, I don't want to do that. No, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, I know how Vice Mayor feels about that stuff. And I don't know what's coming up on our agendas. There may be some really important things there, there may be development projects that are planned for that date, and I just don't know.
No, they're none, I mean-
Right, and that's what I'm saying, I don't know, so I don't want, I don't want to just blanketly try to make a decision blindly. I think Jennifer can advise if it's even possible, and then we can take it up.
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't know whether we, we need to do this, and I don't, we could have, and I missed it, but do we need to excuse Vice Mayor?
Yeah, we probably should for both meetings. We didn't do it this morning either.
At least this morning. Oh, no, we didn't.
No. Okay, so can I have a motion and a second to excuse?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Vice Mayor, I mean Commissioner Torga and Commissioner Walker, for both meetings, yes?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that's it. Thank you, we're adjourned.